I've unmuted you.
Thank you. Like call this meeting to order the Benzy County Board of Commissioners. Today is February 28, 2023. We're in the Frank Walder House boardroom. Roll call please.
Cunningham?
Here.
Do not?
Here.
Markey?
Here.
Nay?
Here.
Roloff?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Horzacki?
Here.
All present.
We stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Benzy County. Ask for your guidance with the decisions we will make today. Please keep all of our public safety personnel safe and free from harm. In the name of your son, amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
That's what I was just noticing.
Are there any additions, changes to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Let's see.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Any man, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, go over the minutes from February 14.
There's one correction in the minutes on page two at the bottom where it says approve change order number three. If you look from the second to the bottom sentence inward, they'll go board of chair. It should just be board chair. I'll strike of and I'll do that also in the end.
United moves to approve with that change.
Support.
Motion support. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Brings us to our first public timeout. Everybody like to address the board? Any none of them close public input? Move on to finance. The payment of the bills $340,111. Horzacki.
Marky will support.
Motion in support. Any further discussion?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Katie, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but under Fund 101, general fund, there's an There's an, the line item for the electric bill is in there and it's for like sixty-eight, almost sixty-nine hundred dollars. There's somewhere where I can point you to so you can see what I'm seeing.
What, what page of the journal entry detail?
Page two, that first block. Under nine, two, fours.
Oh, for the main building?
Yeah.
I too, it made me. It's a very high bill, but it's actually, it's in pretty well line of what we've been at. As well as last year at this time, we were very high as well. This seems to be kind of the time when we're quite high.
Okay, because I compared that to the sheriff's or the jail, you know, there's such a difference, but yet. Seems like we have the same kind of usage, but you looked at that already, is that right?
Yeah, because it made my eyes get big as well. It's a very expensive bill. But when you look at the actual bill summary and how they provide the different years for that month. It's pretty well in line of where we were at last year as well.
Thanks for looking at it.
And generally that bill would be referencing a month ago. Which primarily is the coldest month.
It was the coldest month, yeah.
That's all I hear.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nay?
Yes.
Roloffs?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Horzacki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alrighty, we have a public, public hearing for Eclipse Communications close out their CDBG alone. So we're going to move into a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to address this, this cover?
Morning Commissioners. Laura Galbraith, President of Venture North Fund and Development. Managing the CDBG loan fund for some years now. We're here to highlight a success story. We just wanted to give you some quick facts and figures. We've been able to deploy seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of Benzie County CDBG funds. And we have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand left to deploy. So we are actively working with Benzie County businesses who are expanding that might need capital. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. But the project that we're going to be talking about today is Eclipse Communications. Just located at twenty-five thirty-two Benzie Highway in Benzonea. And they borrowed fifty thousand dollars to be able to purchase some equipment and working capital. And they had twenty-four months to hire two positions to build a qualify for CDBG, which they did. They did hire two positions of which fifty-one percent qualify as low to moderate individuals, which is the purpose of the program. So with this closeout hearing, the steps of the process are for Benzie County to provide a brief description of today's. Public hearing, including the date and the number of citizens attending. And they must submit or have on file with MEDC, the final progress report, the final job creation summary report. Actions to affirmative, further fair housing and all of the Benzie County policies, including procurement. Residential anti-displacement, section three, fair housing, nondiscrimination, excessive force policy, public participation. Make me list all of these during the course of the public hearing. But final comment is just that Chris Veronhorst is here from Eclipse. If you'd like him to come and speak to the business and, and the project. But with that being said, that is my part of the public hearing.
Or before you leave, not specific to this transaction, but you said there's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars left?
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Remind me, once those funds go into repayment, then they become available for anybody in the region that you service, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so the money's at a hundred and seventy, that is their money still dedicated to Benzie County?
Correct. Yep, those are federal funds, still have to go through the federal eligibility requirements. But the seven hundred and ninety-five thousand is available to all of the ten county region. And Grant Shores County has been able to contribute to that fund as well. So it's really one point five million that's been federalized and available to businesses across the reason, region.
Thank you. Chris, did you have anything you want to share? Yes, please.
Come to the podium.
Yep.
Good morning, it's good to see all of you again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And hoping I could just answer maybe a few questions, but. If memory serves me correctly, I think we've gone through three iterations of this funding source now. Since two thousand and twenty. And all three of them have. Aggregated together for us to meet the requisite amount of heavy equipment for. Other heavier work, most importantly fiber of the home, which we had started. Last year internally speaking. Internally meaning for us to conduct fiber of the home operations can intrinsic to Eclipse's operations day in and day out. So we look forward to future opportunities. There's always more equipment to buy and more preparations to be made. And it's an opportunity that we are thankful for to access this funding. It's been great work in Venture North and of course everyone here as well too. Any questions I can answer?
Questions for Chris? I think some of the folks want to know when they're going to be wired up or are they or?
That would be the ubiquitous question, you know, going a decade or two. It's nice to say there's tremendous movement in broadband realm last year and this year. Will be this year and every year succeeding this one as well too. And we're very excited to be a part of that. And look forward to all the different opportunities that are going to come our way, some of which we're working on right now.
Perfect.
That's quite the political response there, Chris. Can we answer that question? No, Chris, let me ask you though, because we seldom get this opportunity. You're part of a consortium with Cherry Capital and others. From your point of view, how is that working out and how does it play in to your business plan?
If I could be granted more, first I can answer the questions how it fits into our business plan, but. Ever since the inception of Eclipse Communications, we've wanted to grow as a company, but we've also wanted to. Remain flexible and agile so that opportunities that present themselves. We can always clinch and wrap our fingers around as opposed to wishing we were in a different spot or in a different light at that point in time. I've been working with Tim from Cherry Capital for probably a little over a half of a year now. And we have a working arrangement between us. As for the mechanics of how exactly it's all going to pan out, it's. Complicated to advise on that. This. This regime that we're working together right now, we feel can be expanded on Benzie County and surrounding area. And I believe that, I speak for Tim, but I believe he has other mind to find. New and novel ways to work together that are both standardized, but also novel and outside the box as well too. And it's my hope that perhaps by. April or May that Amanda could provide more information as to how exactly we're working together when it comes down to. Actual work, it's one thing to. Plan and speculate. It's something I've done for many years now and I believe he's done as well too. But we're both in a sense of the word. Blazing the new trail and, and working together in this format. And gaining experience in doing so, though also should say that. You know, in retrospect, we wish we could move faster and prepare ourselves for these grant opportunities that are. Due this month and next month, but also for the opportunities coming out as well too. The, the, the funding situation for broadband has. Always been anemic, I guess is a nice word over the years. The last three years have been. Casted in totally different light with the COVID situation and the amount of. Light being shown upon the importance of broadband at the state and federal level. And that's still panning out, there's at least half a grand opportunities that are available this year, next year. It's hard to even acquire information for. And to your question Bob, as to the speed or haste by which infrastructure can be deployed. Where significant sums of money are required in, in all senses of the word, not only in Benzie County, but surrounding area. And information pertaining to that funding. Is also pretty anemic at times, for example, calling the USDA office in Traverse City. Just a few months ago for stipulations and criteria and upcoming grants, so they, they can't even have that yet. And you know, it's kind of going to the horse's mouth for information, you know, in that regard. And I guess that is why. Eclipse Communications has touted this, I guess, almost three years worth of investment towards preparing for fiber of the home. In order to create natural to Eclipse stability to work in that realm without waiting for the requisite. Money to be available, which suffice to say, I guess will be a bit more predictable going forward, but you can't always count on that year after year. And we wish to work on it permanently, not until the next pot of money appears.
Perfect.
Long answer, but is there any other?
Is there a short one?
The short one was a political one.
Chris, I actually have a question. Simply put, what is the biggest issue for Eclipse right now? Legal, money, personnel, equipment?
I guess is the answer to that.
Like a cherry pick each one of those, but gosh, biggest.
And I guess the follow-up would be how can the county support evading that?
A lot said about equipment and personnel and of course funding, but we wish to. We wish to increase our momentum working with Cherry Capital. Seems like. It's taking too long to kind of get down to the nuts and bolts, the brass tacks of, of that. And I guess. If Benzie County could. Think you guys have been found will work with thus far, but. And I, you know, not knowing the arrangement between Cherry Capital and Benzie County, I would say that influencing us to work together. More quickly, more efficient format would be good.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We have one for you. I'm just curious, I watched Spectrum going up and down our area. Different roads and are they cutting you off in spots or how exactly? Is there any type of grid that says this is my area and? They see an issue coming down the road, especially when they get this stuff done. And they've been working twenty-four, seven for the last, I don't know, three, four weeks or better. Just curious.
Well. BDC, Form four, seven, seven, Form four, nine, eight, Form four, nine, nine, all the. Go through a forms that the government has required us to fill out over the years and reporting where our subscriber base is. And what our plans are, that same reporting format has not been followed by a lot of the large incumbent providers out there. This is something we've discussed in this format before in prior meetings. It was surprising to us in the areas that we were initially building in, we were very close to breaking ground. And you cannot just go to. Spectrum's website or any provider's website and see what their plans are. And so what you're referring to is, is called a buildover. It's when you have infrastructure in an area, you have an investment. And then somewhat out of the blue, another company deploys infrastructure in the area, which, you know, would not have been. Deployed or planned to be deployed if the money wasn't available. It's incumbent writers are known for showing up when the money is available and this brings why. Some writers have made no infrastructure investment in Benzie County for ten, fifteen, twenty years, but they're now. But it would also be foolish for a company to think that they can just operate and not fear some form of competition from someone else somewhere out there. And that's very common across all the realms of business. So we were prepared for that. In principle, but it's still with our deployment that we had. Publicly announced starting in March of last year, we had a retool that we lost about four or five months worth of work in having to. Plan for or engineer infrastructure in an area that may have been. Approached by us in a secondary tertiary format, you know, that was down the road with fast tracks and that works so that we could. Not build over a build over of our own infrastructure, at least at this point in time. That would be Love Road and Elsworth Road, Grace Road area with how that equipment started going in. And so the buildover of our infrastructure by other companies versus foreseen ahead of time and. Want so much damage Eclipse Communications as in just requires us to kind of reposition. The chessboard a little bit where resources are being spent at that particular point in time.
Here, I'd suspect though that what you're saying. Areas that they acquired through or, or off those bidding process. Eclipse did not bid in that and but Cherry or both Cherry Cap and not Cherry Capital, but.
Spectrum.
Spectrum did, so that's probably what you're saying. If we laid a map out for you, you could see where each of these companies, there's three of them that were successful in bidding for those areas. Chris's point, you were being financially rewarded to do that and that's why you see them there. There was one company I know that supposedly got this, hasn't done anything.
Mercury.
We haven't, in fact, rumor has it that Mercury may back away from that and sell their rights or someone will sell their rights to other provider.
Right. I have a question. So the open, open access model that's being developed and the consortium that's formed. As you go forward to secure these Robin and beads funding, are you acting as a consortium? Or is every entity applying independently to just see how you. What you ultimately end up being successful securing?
The, the open format is unique and novel to Cherry Capital and so that model cannot. I've never seen it participated in. Or created. Anywhere in my entire time in, in this industry and, and information technology in general. And, but it's a very powerful model that has. A degree of robustness and, and just overall kind of opportunity associated with it. Private infrastructure when it comes to fiber has always been built in a strictly. A private format, so. If done correctly, would be the basis by which it could be expanded on to a great effect in this area. A lot has to happen before that is going to. Going to occur and it requires. You know, word consortium, that'd be replaceable with joint venture, team in agreement. Mergers, acquisitions. I feel it's something that could work across a greater Northwest Michigan region, but in terms of participation, no large company is going to. Join that much less upholder principles of it, it's not congruent with how those companies operate. So therein lies a degree of unpredictability with. How the infrastructure is going to operate and how it's going to benefit the companies to participate in it so that it can be expanded on. Efficiently, yes, efficient format.
Did you get all that?
Answered my question without answering it.
That requires a lot more conversation than I think might be outside the scope of here. So, so to try to fill the, the points and pack it all together, it's going to be hard to do that.
Fair enough.
Anybody else? Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment during this public hearing? All right, we're going to go ahead and. Close public hearing. And move on to elected officials, department heads. I'm sorry. So we need a motion to. Grant title to Eclipse Communication. Correct. Permanently further fair housing. You. Okay, so we're gonna.
Do we need a motion? Says we're good.
Yep. So. We're going to close public hearing. Move on to elected officials, department heads.
Good morning, Doug Durant from Benzy Senior Resources. I believe you should already received the packet last week. Um, just a couple of updates, the um, income tax program. Um, has this kind of exploded on itself and um, we gotta get more packets. So. As of today, about 230 packets have been sent out. They're now starting to come back completed and stuff. Um, so the Northwest Community Action Agency assigned two more. Volunteers to our agency to help with the higher demand than anticipated. Um, which is a good thing. So um, well, people are getting good news. Um. The um. I have two upcoming monitoring visits, uh, one on March 24th. With area agency on aging for the nutrition programs. This is a yearly annual one, and then something new is Northern Healthcare Management, which is another. Uh, Medicaid waiver entity in our area will be coming out uh, April 6th to audit our home healthcare agency. Component, uh, which they've never done before. So. Looking forward to see. Uh, what their protocols are and stuff. Uh, client handbook, um, is 95% complete. This is something new. Um, that I've been working on diligently for three, four months now. And out of that, we've um, already dealt the new home safety booklet as well for our client. That's about 90, 95% complete. The new convection oven has been installed. That again was an award. You know, 100 plus, um, Benzy Women Who Care. And so we got that award back in the fall. It just took forever to have that baby built. And um, delivered. So um, it is um, an operation has been for a couple of weeks now. So I'll report it out to them the first week in April when they meet. And they've already requested, I think, um, homemade cookies to be baked out of the oven and shared, but so we'll see how that goes. Um, volunteer recognition event, which we had paused because of COVID. Is set for um, National Volunteer Week and our two events, two day event would be the 17th and 18th. In order to accommodate 160 plus volunteers and their. Um, friends that they will bring. So we have to do it over two days. Um, March for Meals, we haven't done this either in three years since COVID. Um, but we're doing a Champions Week where we'll invite. Um, um, media champions to ride along on a route with one of our. Um, steamed volunteer drivers. And you should be all receiving some letters, I think will be going out today or tomorrow. If you're interested in doing that, hopefully it'll be a nice sunny day and. No inclement weather, but again, if you can't do it the week of um. March 20th or 20th through 24th will be happy to work you in. Um, if you choose to hang out in a warmer climate, you know, weather wise, that's fine. I am visiting um. Representative Roth. Friday at area agency on aging, um, he's going to be at their office. And then on the 13th, uh, Representative Paffia will be at the. Grand Traverse Pie Company next to the state theater. And my goal is to um, introduce myself to her as well in our agency and stuff. Um, so. Haven't done. Everything has always been done through emails and stuff. So it's kind of neat to now go back to. Face to face and um, and visit with them and stuff and. Do hopefully a good presentation face to face and via Zoom. So. Uh, number wise, again, on the report, um. We continue to slowly. Grow in every area, um, home healthcare. Again, we're over 100 clients. Um, and looking, you know, again, there's some more interviews. Waiting for the folks to give us their answer back, stuff, um, if they're, if they're interested in coming on board and things like that. So. Um. Ship it away at our waiting lists and homemaking. Um, recently hired a new homemaker and stuff. She's now ramping up. With client load and stuff like that. So. Um, this has been busy and um. We started our campaign for tying in for March for Meals. Of course, that's tomorrow, March 1st already. Um, we need to raise $25,000. Um, I think you're all aware of the ban, gave us a $10,000 award. We just submitted yesterday. Um, a $10,000 grant to Cherry Land Electric Community Who Cares. And Olson Foundation will be the next one we'll apply for as well. You know, just doing some numbers, we generally keep our vehicles seven to eight years. It seems like. That's when they kind of give up on us. Um, but again, if you look at numbers today and times that by seven years, you're looking at 130,000 meals, just one vehicle will deliver over that seven year period. So again, um, it's so important to have these vehicles and good. Be good conditioned to keep, as I say, the meals are rolling out there and stuff and the volunteer visits for the home checks and stuff helped um, back. So. Yeah. Any questions?
Ready?
I gotta ask you one. Is there any, is there any updates? Uh, what you guys have been reviewing is I'll call it your space needs?
Oh, yeah, um, it's ongoing. Um. You know, we've been in conversation a little bit, um, with the school about the. Uh, Crystal Lake Building. Um. And I know there's other entities out there too are interested in that as well, that property. So we'll see. Um, I sent an email to Katie about. Um, space wise, um, you know, again, I'm very appreciative, I can't stress it enough. That the county lets us use the administration building that we're in for a very, very minimal fee. And but, you know, we're running out of space there. So. Um, looking to maybe somehow put an outside storage unit that we can move. Um, our um. Medical durable equipment into that so we can free up another room. Um, for more services and stuff. Um, the, the hearing clinic has just really taken off and um. And when you got a maps program, hearing clinic, the income tax and other entities wanting to come in and provide services, you got the lawyers. Um, the state planning, it's just like, I need another room. And I also need, you know, if future growth, it does include looking at. Um, a social worker coming on either full time, part time and stuff like that. So. Um, so we're still working with what we have with the, with the glimmer hopes to something bigger and better into the future. I mean, that's all part of our five, five years strategic planning that we went through last fall. To, you know, start the inflammation of that. Um, so, but yeah. Always looking for the. The dream building to drop out of the sky and says Benzy Senior Resources on the outside, but uh.
We'll be, we'll be holding a buildings and grounds meeting in the near future to talk about some things. I have a question, Doug. I attended my first MAC Health and Human Services Committee meeting yesterday and we had a presentation on homelessness. And I was surprised to hear that the biggest segment of population percentage wise, it's growing in homelessness is seniors. Um, do you have any evidence of that in our community?
I, I mean, we have bits and pieces, individual needs, but we haven't seen that in quite some time. Um, not that, not that we're aware of. Um, they do seem to end up at our door looking for help and we haven't seen that. So, and for quite some time. Well, that can, you know, would, but I know it's out there. We just got to dig deep probably for it and stuff.
Any other questions? Appreciate your time, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Cory.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Or else I'm one director for Benzy County. Um, we should have in their packet there, uh, our annual report has been completed. I'm not going to go through and read, read it page by page. Um.
Kevin would prefer you did, but.
I just kind of wanted to highlight on a, on a couple of, on a couple of bigger things. Um. One of them being, um, the statistics page. Um, I tried really hard to get page numbers on this and something had happened to the template. And it was skipping pages. So page three was showing as page five and I couldn't fix it. So I just stopped trying to fight it, took them out. But it's kind of towards the end, the statistical summary. And I really wanted to point out the item right in the middle that's boxed in highlighted. 90% of all 911 calls arriving at the PSAP, which is our 911 center, shall be answered within 15 seconds. Shall, meaning it's, it's a requirement for, as an industry standard. 95% of them should be answered within 20 seconds. As you can see in the, in the table below, we far exceeded that every month. We far exceeded that when I drilled down every week. So our staff up there is far exceeding the standard for answering 911 calls. Um, and that's a, that's a really big thing. Um. Having. Having come from somewhere that's a larger metropolitan center, they don't meet that. When you, if they were even released statistics, like let's say, for example, Detroit, it doesn't look like this. Without seeing that, I can safely say it doesn't look like this. Um. And then kind of some of the other statistics just above, um, a little. Less highlighted, but still adequately important. You know, we received 7,494 inbound 911 calls in Benzy County. That, that's a pretty high number uh, for Benzy County here. Our text to 911 is a little bit lower, um, than seen around the state. And I think that we could probably draw on some conclusions that maybe some of that has to do with the demographics of Benzy County, access to cellular coverage is pretty spotty. Um, things of that nature. But we still have that available. Um. One of the other things that I wanted to um, highlight was just our busiest month of the year for Northern Michigan. We could probably guess that it's July or August and it's July. And we had 2,701 phone calls in that month alone. So. Those are some of the, the important. What I feel are important statistics. There are some other ones. Um, I tried to pull some more information out of our, our CAD system and. We're trying to work with our vendor to correct some errors in that reporting. Um, they were pretty far off. We tried to compare them with the agencies that we partner with, like fire departments and things, and they just didn't line up. We've got some issues that we're trying to, trying to fix with that. Um, and then on the last page is just kind of our projects for 2023, what we're looking at. Uh, we're trying to finish the phone upgrade up the hill at the sheriff's department. Becky is spearheading that. Uh, we are making progress. Um, the two. The multiple vendors that are involved in that are communicating and they are making progress on it. Um, our new dispatch center, our space needs, um, I think that that's pretty well known, um, but we're going to continue to work on that. Um, we've brought back monthly training. Um, in various forms, whether that's an in-service training, we all get together. To talk about some policy changes or some things that are coming, or if that's continuing education, that's going to be occurring. Um, we're going to work on just coming up to industry standards as far as our training program goes, as far as our staffing goes, um, our policies, all of those things. Uh, equipment management is kind of one thing I've talked about. Trying to have a better inventory and tracking of our inventory that we share with our partners. That's already been started. And then our shared office space. Um, so when I came here, Michael didn't really have a dedicated space that's just his. We kind of shared a desk. Um, that proved to be pretty difficult to actually do, uh, once I arrived here. So we have separated desks now in the same office. We share the same space, but he has his own workplace now that he can have his laptop, he can have his documents, everything that he's working on in his own space. With that, the, any questions? Any comments?
Mark?
I hate to let you down by not asking. Two questions unrelated. In your, in your director's report, you comment on one of them about evaluating staffing plans to allow for. 24/7 coverage of two dispatchers. We have 24/7 coverage now, right?
We have 24/7 coverage, but it does not consist of two dispatchers.
Just one.
It's, it's kind of a staggered approach. We try to, we try to implement when we have two people based on call volume, but yes, at times it does go down to one.
And I've asked this of the sheriff's office before also. Yeah, as you see, your folks at time, it's kind of feast or famine. You know, you, like they say, it's nine, 90% boredom and 10% chaos. Um, what happens? Wh- when you have employees that have been under really stressful situations, we offer any follow up? Uh, for them, any type of assistance, or do we just assume that they're going to suck it up and um, that's just the way it is?
That's a really important question, and I think that as, as an industry for 911. I can speak to that. We're usually left out of those conversations when we have these critical stress debriefings or for major events, things like that. 911 Hasn't always been invited to those. We are now. So that, that standard is changing across the industry. Um, here we are included in those also. Um, but for calls that don't quite reach that level, I follow up. I get a daily report of every call that's entered into our CAT system and I review that every day. And if there's a call in there that I kind of red flag or I hear people talking about, I will follow up with that employee in a private conversation, just to check in with them and see how they're doing. Um, because there are some studies that are being released. None that I could cite off the top of my head, but showing that 911 employees have been somewhat neglected in their mental health. And being left out of important conversations to be able to process those things.
Good.
Cory? Yes, sir. Just on, on that note, um, because I'm part of the Northwest Michigan Peer Support Team, we uh. Are always looking for more people. So if you have anybody that wants to be a peer uh, with our team from your group. We just had some training this past weekend, but there's more coming up. So.
Perfect. Yeah, I'll reach out again.
Outside of here, but.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll reach out again and see. I know that we had some, uh, some initial training a little bit. I don't remember the dates, but uh, some people did go through that and I'll see if they are uh, interested in being a part of the regional team.
Okay.
But to answer your question, that is what we have access to. Um, there's a regionalized peer support network. I don't remember the name of it, probably. For me, but that's, you can call them at any time, any day, anytime, and they will respond. And they will, whatever you need, they will address it.
I just want to make sure that for um, anybody in public safety, that they have somewhere they can go if they, if they're feeling overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Any help? It's good.
Well, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else under?
Department heads.
Don't pull the wires.
Ready? Move on to action items. Want to speak to this?
Uh, the first action item is the purchase of an ambulance. Um, this is a purchase though for the 24, 25 fiscal year. Uh, we do have to plan ahead with this. The production of those machines is quite lengthy. And so this is why we're planning so far ahead for this purchase. If there's any individual questions, Tom King would be happy to answer those questions.
Morning.
Morning.
Questions?
Is this a budgeted item?
There is um, money available in the fund balance to plan ahead.
Okay, but it's not something we'd anticipated last September.
Um, so we actually don't pay for this until we get the machine.
Okay.
So um, to have budgeted for it specifically, no, because we're not even going to obtain it until 24, 25.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a, right now a two-year lead time on ambulance production. So that's why we're trying to get ahead. 25, year 25 would be the next. Acquisition period that we would want to acquire another ambulance. We have one that's going to be coming this fall. And then two years from then and in 25 would be the next uh. Time we want to have one in possession. So in the lead time is about two years. So that's why we're. Looking to get that budget approval now.
Is that a historical experience or is that due as a result of? Um. A, a backlog of supplies and inventory and.
Yeah, I think it's just kind of the way things are now. Everything is behind production and every aspect is, is down and, you know, people are all, all. Industry is hurting for employees and I think that's the big issue. It's always been a year to a year and a half lead time on ambulances. So. It's always been a year to a year and a half lead time on ambulances. So. You know, it would be nice that if it wasn't two years out, but you know, it is what it is. And if we wait a year to try to get this approved, then we're going to be a year behind the eight ball.
And they lack the pricing for you.
Correct.
Tom, does this follow your fleet improvement plan or capital improvement plan?
Yes.
How many miles do you think will be on the one that's being retired?
Could be over two hundred thousand miles, depending on which truck we decide at the end of the day, we're going to get rid of.
They worth anything at that price or at that?
I think it just depends on the ambulance, the one that's going to be getting traded in. They're giving us, we're actually trading it in for ten thousand dollars. The last one, the county sold. Say four grand.
Are we at some point in time catching up to the cycle so they will have a little more monetary value?
Possibly, it could be. It just depends. And the biggest issue we've had was in twenty seventeen, before I came on, there was two ambulances purchased at the same time. So those vehicles have relatively similar mileage and one of those is going to be one that's going, going to be traded in possibly. This fall, when the ambulance that's on order right now comes in. And then we'll have the other one that has very similar mileage, but that's a problem. You don't want to buy two ambulances at the same time, unless you're always buying two ambulances at the same time.
Yeah, especially if they're going to be in rotation at the same time. Any other questions?
Thank you. I was going to make the motion of the board of commissioners approve the purchase of one E four fifty ambulance from R S B P Incorporated. And not to exceed the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine with funds available. The two-on-four emergency medical services and authorize the board chair to sign the necessary documents for purchase and taking possession of the unit.
You got it?
Who's got it?
Eric.
Eric.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Worsacki?
Yes.
Hedingham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Morning, Jesse.
Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Perfect timing.
Included in the packet are the contracts for hazardous waste and electronics vendors for twenty twenty-three. They are the same vendors that we've used. ERG we've used for the last two years consecutively and bark the last four. The price did raise. Relatively significantly. Last year it was ninety-three cents per pound for the hazardous waste. This year it's one dollar and twenty-five cents. The mobilization costs have also gone up, but this is the only vendor that serves this Northern Michigan region. For the electronics portion, it was twenty cents per pound. And that raised to twenty-five cents per pound. Not a big leap there. And that's a local vendor, Traverse City and Galva. And there's no changes to the contract. They've been reviewed. They've just been updated for twenty twenty-three states. Which are confirmed at June third Frankfurt High School hazardous electronics and tires. July fifteenth tire only in Thompsonville. August twelfth, road commission in honor, again hazardous waste, electronics and tires.
Did you have a motion already made?
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with Bay Area Recycling for charities for the household hazardous waste. Are you on both at once or do you want them both?
You can do both at once.
All right. And what was the second one, Jesse?
ERG.
And also with ERG for the same.
Second.
Yeah. A motion and support. Further discussion?
Just one, just kind of a housekeeping. With that contract with ERG, I noticed that there was. Oh, it had to do with the Iran-linked businesses. And I've seen that before, but I don't see that in all contracts. What's going on there?
I don't know. I don't have that, that answer. I was kind of surprised to see that as well. But in, you know, all my time here and from review of previous contracts, it's always been a clause. But I think we, I think you've asked that question before.
That's surprising.
Yeah.
Who are you again?
So yeah, those documents are prepared by.
Legal counsel.
Illegal counsel. So it's not something that I input into the.
I got a feeling it's probably some kind of federal requirement now, but I just, just curious. Because I don't see them in every contract. Every once in a while it pops up.
It may have to do with hazardous materials, storage, transport, licensing.
Okay.
But yeah, that is unique. I don't see that in other contracts either.
As long as our attorney's reviewed it, I'm good.
Yep. They've prepared the document.
Any other questions?
When are we charging for the electronics and the TVs and stuff?
No. The only charge to our residents is the mattresses and that's the actual cost. So that cost did rise from ten dollars last year to fifteen. But that's the only actual cost that goes onto our residents.
Thank you.
Yep. Roll call please.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloffs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Worsacki?
Yes.
Hedingham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Morning. I'm Matt Skills from the road commission and I'm here to ask the board to consider our village language, renewal and restoral, restoration, village language. For our road mileage. That we would like to put on the, the ballot for November. The reason we're, I guess I'm asking for a tentative approval at this point. Is that right? The right word, Katie?
Yeah. So when you adopt the ballot language, that's exactly what's put on the ballot. Nothing has changed. And because we don't have the twenty twenty-three taxable value yet, we cannot determine the estimate of revenue to put into the village language just yet. Brian was able to come up with a very conservative estimate. But if we adopt that now and it changes drastically, now we have some incorrect ballot language. And so they were ready to come forward. So we're bringing it forward to discuss, but we won't adopt the actual village language until we have. The correct numbers from equalization, which will be after March and April's board review and equalization.
But this action acknowledges that they're going to restore.
Correct. Back to the nine six six six.
What, what's your, is a percentage, what, what's your surplus right now?
I would say we're probably in the ten to fifteen percent cash surplus.
Okay. And you and I have had this conversation before about having a line item in your budget for capital expenditures, have a capital plan. You guys ever done that?
We are working on it. The same situation with the ambulances. It's so far out that we have a difficult time and we don't get prices locked in. We have three trucks sitting at Grand Traverse Diesel right now that. They're the cabin chassis, brand new, sitting there. They have to go to another vendor to put the sander box and. Do the hydraulics and stuff like that. So it's just so difficult to get a number exactly so far in advance. And these trucks were ordered over a year and a half and they're, we probably, they definitely won't plow snow this year. Hopefully next year at this point. So it's, it's very difficult to do, but we are working on that. Yes.
Just, you know, you and I've had this conversation already. And having fifteen percent or less surplus, how are you ever going to support any improvements over there in the building?
Well, what we're hoping to do is we're, we're putting a pretty large amount towards our MERS retirement liability extra right now. We, we've, I think, well, states says that you have to be over sixty percent funded to be off the naughty list. That's my words, not theirs. But so this last year we got up to sixty-eight percent. Of course, the way the market is, we might lose a little ground now, but we're hoping that if we continue to throw. A fairly significant amount of money at that for the next two to three years. And then once we get to maybe about eighty percent funded, we feel comfortable in cutting that back and then we would have some extra money for. To devote to some, something along the lines of a new facility or remodel facility.
So that tells me that really that any enhancements to the facility are quite a ways out still.
Quite a ways.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Katie, Amy. For helping me with this village process, not something that I'm accustomed to, and I appreciate all your help.
Thanks. Everybody like to make that motion?
Make the motion. Don't know what it is.
I really.
To restore the mileage rate. To restore the mileage rate and have it on the ballot in November, fourteen.
So we will have to bring back the adoption of the village language itself, once we have those numbers. And so what you're taking action on today is to restore and see it forward. But the village language itself will come back for official adoption later.
Was that clear enough, Debbie?
Kinda.
Is there support?
Yeah, Janat supports.
Motion and support. Further discussion? Let's do roll call.
Roloffs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Worsacki?
Yes.
Hedingham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye? Yes. Motion carried.
Thanks for your time, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item D has considered vehicle purchase from Watson Benzy for the sheriff's office use.
I have placed a memo in your packet. This is the final fleet purchase for the sheriff's office. You approved three last time. This would be the fourth. This is for a general fleet replacement. They also take a long time to get these vehicles as well. And so we probably won't see this vehicle for a little bit. But this is to get it approved so that we can process it when it does come in.
And again, is this an item or that was identified at the time we were doing our budget?
It is budgeted, yes.
Do not moves that the board of commissioners approves the purchase of one Dodge Durango vehicle. From Watson Benzy in the not to exceed amount of forty-five thousand and fifteen thousand to fully equip the vehicle for patrol purposes. With funds available in the capital fund.
Markey will support.
Motion to support. Further discussion?
Just wanted to make sure we've been going through the process with my bid or whatever, to look at other vendors. Oh, they kind of brings a red flag with the sheriff, but I'd like to make the approach that we're looking and assuming we have.
Watson has been able to meet or beat all the other prices, right? Prices. And so that's why we're continuing to use Watson at this point. But it's definitely a part of the process to shop around a little bit. So that is not being missed. But Watson is able to either meet or beat prices.
Thank you. And just as a matter of practice though, if, as long as a vendor, in my opinion, is within a reasonable range. I think we ought to be using local vendors. So I, when I was in business, I had a rule of thumb that as long as you're within ten percent, I use you. So I would hope that we would always consider that, because it may not always be the cheapest, but.
Right. We, we do as a whole for Benzy County try to use local, local to Benzy, or at least local to the immediate region. We really do. But sometimes it's just not logical to do that. But we do try to stay local. We really do.
I don't have any problem with being local. I just do our due diligence.
Yes, I'm completely in support of that.
Worded we by the last Dodge. For animal control.
Oh.
This one that you just got.
And that's because it was available and on the lot.
Wherever that.
It's actually a year older that we purchased. It's a.
So there's motion and support. There any further discussion? Roll call please.
Sauer?
Yes.
Worsacki?
Yes.
Hedingham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloffs? Motion carried.
Item B is adoption of directory of charges.
Last summer, we talked about, or maybe it was last fall, we talked about establishing a directory of charges. Various departments on the campus charge a fee for some things, whether it's copies, certified copies. Those sorts of things, whether animal license, all those things. And so what we had found is that the fees were kind of all over the place on the website. And so sometimes it wasn't as easy, user friendly for the community to find an appropriate fee. There was also some fees that were in need of adjustments, specifically animal control fees. And so Rose and my office worked with all the various offices to determine the fees. And what we've done is put it into a directory of charges. So it's in one easy to find document. This document will be linked on the various pages on the website and it'll be designated on the website. So folks can easily find fees. For the various services and things that are purchased from Benzy County.
What does, under animal control, what does altered versus unaltered mean?
Spade or neutered?
Okay. It's a great way of.
It's PC.
I don't know why they just talk to them and get them to change their mind.
And I have a question on, I believe it's on page ten. It says that mileage reimbursement is eighty-five cents for, I believe it is the police. Is that mileage consistent across the board? No.
No.
Okay. What is the reason for the difference?
I will ask the undersheriff to address that piece.
Thank you.
And I, I just see that it actually says mileage, so we'll update.
Yeah.
Forgot a knee.
I saw.
Not to be confused with mileage. Good morning, Greg Huber's undersheriff for Benzy County. M. Coles, our certifying agency has, there's two standards for mileage and there is the federal standard and the state standard. And the reason that is in the eighty-five cents is that both of our certifying agencies say that it must be paid a rate of. In the M. Coles, in the corrections, it's not a contract thing, it's a licensing thing. And that is why we use that suggested amount.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. I just noticed the difference.
Greg, while you're there, I noticed under the directory for sheriff that it's your area. That is the only one charging for an hourly rate. I'll find it's like fourteen something an hour.
Fourteen fifty-nine.
Why is it that other areas aren't charging for employees' time to, you call it lookup time. But yet the sheriff's office does charge for it.
That is part of the freedom of information and can charge for that time. That is the lowest rate we can possibly charge based upon. The lowest paid person that can fulfill that request.
So FOIA, FOIA requires that it's the lowest paid person capable of doing the work. They're able to pinpoint that person. However, down here we have various departments. And so being able to pinpoint that dollar amount isn't reasonable because we, everybody's in a different department and everybody has different pay rate wages. And so it wouldn't just be one standard for this building. It would be dependent upon that office.
So that's why we don't have a fee in other departments.
Yes, because it, this falls under FOIA. And so FOIA says lowest paid person capable of doing the work. And I'm not capable of pulling a record from a clerk's office and same vice versa. And so our rate for our office is different than that of a clerk's office.
They still charge a rate.
Yes.
They just don't have that set amount.
It's just not set.
You do have an hourly rate that you charge.
Yeah, it's part of the FOIA.
This is going to have to change year.
This is gonna have to change yearly, yeah.
Potentially.
Yes.
We should be, um, reviewing our directory of charges annually anyways. Um, it's important to be doing that.
So I struggle a little bit. Now, you've heard me say this before, with FOIA, you know, I mean, it's, citizens have the right taxes of the information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're already paying taxes for us to be here, but yet we're charging them to look up information. Um, do we charge on every request for FOIA?
FOIA requests?
Yeah.
Um, we typically, if it's under like five dollars, we don't. Um, we don't charge. So if it's something super quick, and the law says that as well, if it's something reasonable that you can find quickly, or you can point somebody in the right direction as far as a web link or something of those sorts, we don't, we don't charge for that. But anything that's a bit more involved, we do charge under FOIA, yes. So something, something pretty routine in nature, quickly, you know, quickly done, we don't charge for.
I guess, for me, it's just a value, uh, proposition, but I could understand if they don't live in our community, we charge them, because I'm sure you get a fair amount of that, people just fishing. But I, I guess I'm challenged charging people that are already paying taxes in our market. We get a lot of FOIA requests.
Uh, depends. It's, it's kind of, we'll have a few, and then we'll have none. And then we'll have like ten, and then we have zero. It's very up and down. Some weeks, there's a couple. Other weeks, there's none for a month.
That's the same way at the sheriff's office?
Yes, it is, sir. Uh, we have, uh, seventy percent of our requests roughly are from attorney's offices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and of that seventy percent, the majority of those are from attorney's offices, uh, not within our community.
I get you.
Yeah, the majority is usually a firm or something of some sort. There's not many individuals who request things. It's usually a company or an organization or a law firm.
All right, I'm not gonna debate it here, but I appreciate the update.
Under Sheriff, what would, um, the seizure, eighty dollars per hour, what would be an example of what would, how a person would incur that charge?
That is a civil process. Um, that is if the court orders, um, and let's say, I'm trying to think of some recent examples. Somebody owed, uh, a company a hundred thousand dollars for a large amount of equipment, and the court ordered, uh, that they pay that back, and they know that, um, this person has, um, six backhoes at their residence, uh, or pieces of equipment, and, uh, court orders that you go seize those.
It's like a repo function.
It is like a repo, uh, under a court order, and then those are required to be, say, uh, sold, and the profits go to, uh, or paying down that civil act.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the undersheriff? Thank you. And look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve that the Board of Commissioners adopts the Directory of Charges for Benzie County as presented.
Second.
Motion and support. Roll call, please.
Or Saki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Prove comfort dog program and related sheriff's office policy.
So the sheriff was here about a month ago now to talk about the, um, puppy that was donated to Benzie County, um, an AKC Labrador who has been named Briggs. Um, Briggs is, uh, going to be a comfort dog for the sheriff's office, primarily in the schools, but other functions, um, as well that may be appropriate for a comfort animal. Uh, this will not be a canine animal finding, you know, bad things, drugs and those. It's really a comfort animal. So it's, uh, this, this dog will go through, um, a certain level of obedience training. It really will be used, um, with those officers to, you know, build those relationships with children and, children and other folks. Um, Deputy Mull, uh, has taken this dog to the school a couple of times, and she was just amazed of the children who before wouldn't even look at her. Now they'll come to her office and talk to her, because they want to pet the puppy. And so she's building relationships with some of those kids that maybe she wouldn't have before. And that's, you know, that's kind of the goal of our school resource program, is to build these relationships with these kids, and to work on that community policing. And so Briggs, the puppy, is serving in that purpose. Um, he's very cute. I got to hold him. And so undersheriff Hubers has, um, put together a, a program and policy that's in your packet. Um, we've looked at other, uh, agencies who are doing similar programs, and so we've kind of begged, borrowed, and, uh, stole from other policies around, around for programs that are similar to this nature. The MM RMA, uh, is completely on board with this, and they do cover the animal, but as well does the school insurance policies. So from a liability standpoint, this animal is being covered. Um, the other thing as a matter of today is the ability to accept donations. So there is a great deal of donations waiting in the wings for this puppy and this program. And so we have to, uh, establish, uh, lines and able to, to accept those donations, and then pay for the veterinary care and such of this, of this dog. If there's any other specific questions, undersheriff Hubers is happy to answer.
I'm gonna make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approves the comfort dog program and policy for the Benzie County Sheriff's Office, and approves the creation of a necessary revenue and expenditure lines to accept donations and pay for the care and training for the designated dog for this program.
I second.
Oh. Everybody likes the dog.
Motion, yeah, motion and support. Is there any discussion?
Just, just want to make one comment. Uh, Greg did a great job on the, on the policy or the program policy, but, uh, um, committee, school committee was all in favor of this.
They were.
So I just wanted everybody to know that. It's gonna be a good program, I think.
I do have one question. Um, this reverts back to one of ours. Has this dog been altered?
He has not yet. Frankly, he's too young for that, but he will be.
I have one question to Sheriff. Uh, when Briggs isn't working, where is he?
He is with Deputy Suzanne Mull at her residence.
All right, thank you.
They've gotten the responsibility and.
Yep.
She has, and we, uh, under this, under this program and under this policy, that it's not a, uh, we are not paying her anything additional, uh, for care of the dog or anything like that. Although the funds will be private funds, and they're not, they don't go to her individually there for the care of the dog, again, the training.
If I recall, this makes dog number three for the Goney. Sergeant Katz?
Yes.
Detective Castle? And now Suzanne Mull.
Yes, and if you're, if you're not aware, Detective Lieutenant Castle has a dog that is, uh, owned by the prosecutor's office, and he has a, trained as a comfort dog, and he, uh, sits in court with individuals that need that comfort, uh, especially children, uh, or victims of crimes, uh, and just sits there on the stand. Uh, both judges have allowed it, and, uh, give jury instruction accordingly, that there will be a comfort dog, and it just sits next to the person, and they can reach down and pet it to help them, uh, with their test.
Good.
Greg, you did say something regarding care. The deputy that the, the dogs assigned to, they don't have any out-of-pocket expenses, do they?
They do not, yeah.
And I understand Mr. or Sergeant Katz is retiring. Does he maintain the dog with him?
I do have a contract drawn up, uh, for that dog, uh, to go to the Katz's upon retirement. Uh, but that is not, those papers haven't been officially received yet, as of yesterday at least, by the administrator's office. Uh, but when that happens, we do have a contract drawn up, uh, to release all the rights of that dog to the Katz's.
Sounds good. So there's motion and support. Roll call, please.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item G. Stay there, please.
The bailiffs.
Oh, they are. Thank you.
Big part-time bailiffs.
Uh, so, um, we talked about at the board level hiring on part-time bailiff positions to increase security in this building, as well as get us to a point where we have twenty-four-hour road patrol. Uh, undersheriff Hubers has been working diligently on finding, uh, folks to serve in those positions. Um, and what we're here today is to obtain a budget amendment in the amount of ninety thousand dollars to pay these folks, as well as equip them with the necessary equipment and uniforms to serve in that role. Um, undersheriff Hubers can talk about the logistics as to when they may start, um, and what they will do while they're here, if those questions are there. Uh, but we did talk about this in the past.
And if I remember right, what we agreed to was a three-year commitment, and then this will be reviewed again after that.
Yep, and so next year, we'll budget accordingly for these positions.
Are you having any luck finding anybody, Greg?
I am. I have, uh, I have opened my office for people. Of those four, two are certainly interested and are just waiting on the approval. Uh, there's a third one that, uh, I used to work for a very long time ago, that, uh, is, and Katie had the, they have to meet him. Uh, he will be available in the late fall, uh, due to some prior commitments, working on a cold case in the Muskegon.
Something we can work with.
I believe that it is. I think that I'd like to see it start with the original two, and, uh, get our program up and running and move him in in the fall to the, to the third spot.
And I'll tell you, the people that have mentioned this too, since we, since we began discussing it, have gotten no negative feedback. And if there was any feedback, it was positive, that we're going to twenty-four-hour patrol.
This is part of, and this is one of the bigger steps in the process of moving to twenty-four-hour patrol, of getting this done. We have a few more hurdles that I'm sure we all will get through, and, and we'll be able to make it out by the, the late summer.
I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners approve a general fund budget amendment in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. Three part-time bailiff positions, related equipment with funds available on two eight two.
A second.
Motion and support is our discussion. I have one question. There's not court every day. What will these folks be doing in the off time?
We will, we know that schedule pretty much a week in advance, and we will schedule accordingly with them. I will, um, strive to always have one person in this building, because, uh, right now, as soon as there's not court, we pull the bailiff, and we send them out serving tape.
Right.
Um, and I think that reduces the security in the, in this building, and I want somebody here in this building. And whenever, during those normal business hours.
Very good. Everybody else? Roll call, please.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item H is to approve state surcharge for central dispatch operations.
Yeah, are Janat's gonna move to, as the Board of Commissioners approve, maintaining a three-dollar per device surcharge for central dispatch operations from July twenty-three, June twenty-four, authorizes the clerk and central dispatch director, signed a necessary documentation for submission to the State of Michigan.
Second.
Motion to support. Is there a discussion? Questions? Corey?
Well, actually, I'm good, because I know where they're gonna spend the money.
Well, we can always try to pinch that corner, you know?
Yeah, we'll work on that. I wish there was a way.
Right.
Of getting all these, uh, cell phones that come out of these other areas to be forced to kick in something for their percentage of time that they spend here, but that's a legislative thing.
Right. Anybody else? So there's a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yep.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
It's easy. Go sit down fast, Corey.
No, the next one's his, too.
So, item I, uh, approval of understanding with Leona County Emergency Switch Service on the radio.
I can speak to this briefly. Um, this was something that we had talked about previously. Um, this is not a, this is new for us in Benzie County. Um, this is not a new concept. Um, right now, Wexford County has this very similar agreement with the Michigan State Police, their regional dispatch center in Gaylord, to have that same functionality. Um, so this idea isn't new, it's just new to Benzie County. And, uh, short a summary of this means that, right now, if a responder in Benzie County with a Benzie County-issued portable radio or mobile radio pushes their orange button, which is their emergency button, it does nothing. Nobody's notified, nobody has any idea what's going on. This will change that to allow for a alert-type notification to our dispatch center in Benzie County, and then also the state's required additional monitoring software in Leona County. And the reason for that software to be in Leona County is just budgetary. It's, it's very expensive.
I will make the motion that the Board of Commissioner approves a memorandum of understanding with Leona County Central Dispatch for Emergency Alert Button Activation Monitoring, subject to approval as to form by legal counsel, and authorizes Director Corey Ellis to sign.
Second.
Motion and support. Further discussion? Roll call.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Or Saki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Oh, it's just about ten twenty. What did I, what do we say? Take a brief break. We'll be back in seven minutes.
My minutes because.
You're unmuted.
They're already on.
We're back in sessions. There you are at Commissioner Reports. I had very quiet last couple of weeks. Village Lake and nothing to report for them. They do have one of the local business person that has anything to do with the village, but a new resident that is being sued by a private enterprise for something that is off the wall, but I'll find out some more on that one. We all need to be aware of what this guy's up to. As well as EMS, and most of you know that that particular committee is going to be resolved and follow up with an ad hoc committee. And I think we put six months on it for the time being now and then see what direction and if any update to bylaws and look at a different format for that one. That's all I have for this past month or the past two weeks. You have Arch Report, Karen's Report. If either one of you would like to comment on anything, I have nothing to add.
I have something to subtract. On my report, I said I was going to the Airport Authority that was canceled. And the information, I said I had a lot of information to share about the MAC environment. I have that information. The big takeaway was that there were no federal regulations overseeing that, that that has to be done locally, and they suggested it be done in the master plan.
All righty. Questions, Gary?
Sure, I had a few meetings. I attended Agenda Review before this meeting. I attended the Village of Beulah. They covered a couple of things. Cottage Pros gave a presentation. They are going to fabricate their T-Doc so it can come in and out of the water. The council approved moving forward with that. Their zoning administrator shared that there was an inquiry regarding the Old Grain Center becoming an event center. And they have updated their campsite requirements that the boats have to be buoyed offshore. They used to allow them to be sit on the shore and they're not going to do that anymore. They need to be off. So I have had three sewer feasibility study meetings. Much of those, the focus was creating an authority. The authority that's going to be created for the sewer system feasibility is going to be between Benzonia Township and the Village of Benzonia. We have met with Eagle to discuss Beulah's Pond and the ACO that's going to be issued and the timeline for any kind of regionalization that can occur there. I want to reiterate that the presentation for the community is going to be on March 7th at 6:00 PM. The upper level of the Mills Community House, there is a flyer that's circulating on social media. And Wade Trim will be facilitating that presentation. I attended the EDC meeting, which Commissioner Janot covered. We did hear from BWAC. There was a presentation. They answered a couple of questions and wanted the EDC to know that no, what they're proposing is not a duplication of services. That yes, what they're proposing is feasible and yes, what they're proposing is sustainable. They discussed an endowment fund for a safety net. They urged that the county view what they're proposing as recreation, as infrastructure. And its focus would be responding to public safety, first responder training and therapy. Their ask was for $250,000 to facilitate access to capital for the design phase, and the EDC took no action on that request. I attended three Benzie-Lelandau Health Department meetings. One was the board meeting, one was a finance meeting, and one was a bylaw meeting. At the board meeting, we were told that a new environmentalist staff was hired. His name is Brent Yonker. And this is responding to the new sanitary code where there will be point of sale inspections on well and septic. Dan Thorell, our new public safety officer, shared the key points of funding priorities from MELF, which is the Michigan Association of Local Public Health. And those three were more dollars for healthcare workers, more dollars for building capacity and physical infrastructure, and an increase to have the state meet its statutory requirement of PA 368 to meet cost contributions in 2023, which they haven't done for years and years and years. The board, they also discussed the state side of temporary campground fees have increased. So it's going to look like local fees have increased. They haven't. It's just reflecting the state side that that went up and that passes through our health department. I also attended the MAC Health and Human Services Committee meeting for the first time. As I mentioned earlier, there was a presentation given on homelessness by Lisa Chapman, who is with the Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness. She talked about different resources. Couple of takeaways from her presentation was that housing stock in Michigan between 2010 and 2019 has decreased by 40%, while the national decline is 15%. And the other big takeaway was the biggest predictor of being homeless is having been in the foster care system. And I didn't know that. She also shared the 2023 state priorities for MAC, and there are six of them. I'm just going to list those real quick. MAC is going to focus on revising the Open Meetings Act to allow for remote voting, creating a fair revenue sharing system through a statutory earmark of state sales tax, enacting reforms to ensure proper funding of local courts, increase resources for juvenile justice services, compensating local governments for funds diverted by the Veterans Property Tax Exemption, and revamping the PPT exemption to provide annual reimbursement to local governments. And that's all I have.
Questions, Rhonda?
Rhonda, I just want to circle back to something you said earlier in the meeting today about homeless, you know, being affected by the elderly. You know, as I understand it, the way they measure homelessness could be someone that's sleeping on a relative's couch.
You know, she said that that they don't count in these statistics because that was asked specifically. If somebody is living with a relative or on a friend's couch, are they considered homeless? And they said that technically, yes. So I don't know. It depends. I guess it depends on the survey that you look at.
Okay, all right. That clears.
Well, thanks, Rhonda. Tim?
Um, Ben's Senior Resources. Don't have to say anything on that. Doug does a fantastic job covering that. The LAPC LPT meeting, LAPC approved the Flat River Hatchery Offsite Response Plan. Networks Northwest went over the progress of the hazard mitigation plan that they're working on. LPT work continues on the 2023 draft of the Emergency Operations Plan. Rebecca is still working on a mass casualty plan for Benzie County that we're working on. I think 2024 is hopefully when we're going to do that exercise. And went over the recent and upcoming training. Homestead Township Board had a special meeting to work on their budget. It was a lot of fun. Fun fact, that old brush truck Homestead Firehead went for $13,200. It was a 1976 Ford F-600. Yes, I was very surprised it went for that much.
Antique.
Yes. I attended the MAC Judiciary and Public Safety Meeting. That was my first MAC meeting. Well, we covered, they covered the priorities which Rhonda already went through. We were given a presentation on trial court funding from Mike Osinak, the Monroe County Administrator. This went over the recent history of trial court funding, the changes in the public acts and what they're working on going forward. Apparently they're using, my understanding, just like they put funding in place, it's temporary, close to sunset, and they're working on a more permanent solution. I don't have the full information. I'm supposed to be forwarded that PowerPoint, but I have not received it yet. This is the first meeting of the calendar year, and there are a lot of new committee participants. Most of them are first-term county commissioners. Also, we kind of went over either committees, what it's supposed to be doing. And we did a overview of the platform process, the items which this committee covers that MAC is in favor of and or opposed to. Specifically, it's going to be corrections, jail, courts, corrections, law enforcement, emergency 911 funding and operate. That's why.
Questions?
Evan? Just to report on last night's Parks and Rec meeting. They had three resolutions that the Parks and Recs voted on, and first one was that Railroad Point Endowment was to pay the back property taxes on the coal property. The second was Parks and Rec support the Friends of the Lighthouse for the commitment of $250,000 from the county for the Shoreline Protection Program. And the third one was a request that this board allocate $80,000 from our ARPA funds for the Crystal Lake Outlet Project.
One question. They agreed to pay the taxes.
Yes.
That was the resolution. That wasn't it to me. I didn't make the meeting. I got an email this morning from Ed. So those were the three resolutions that he wanted me to make.
What was the third one again? I'm sorry.
That this board allocate $80,000 from our ARPA funds to the Crystal Lake Outlet Project.
Questions? Gary?
It's amazing. Anyway, Welden Township, right after our last board meeting, they have some increased costs for their trash day. It went up substantially, but they're still planning on doing it about $2,000 more than last year for each. Added some things like mileage and whatever. Everything keeps going up, so you have to do it. I sent in a DNR webinar that Shelley Amos Thompson sent me through the DNR, and I can see why nobody wants to go through that mess. There's three different pots of money, and it's pretty, pretty difficult to navigate. Everything has to be through by April 1st, I believe. Just the passport grant alone in '21, only 30% received a grant. And in '22, only 40% received a grant. So they get a lot more applications than they do anything else. And there's a booklet you can get to help you process it. Leaving it to somebody who knows what's going on. It's just, just was interesting to sit in on it. Village of Thompsonville, or Thompsonville, Alberta, we'll go back to Alberta. Elmer's is going to fix and replace that main. That main was put in in 1935. It was cast iron. The cost is going to be $186,350. And it looks like this is going to be able to be tied into their grant for the project this summer. That was the only good news out of the whole thing, but kind of makes me wonder, like in Thompsonville, how old some of those pipes are because they've been around a while. Health Department, the only thing I want to add there is we discussed the increase in rent for the building. And DOD's response was they had never been asked to increase it at all. They're trying to build a fund for capital improvements. They just got done doing the roof. So that was part of it, but they are still thinking about expanding. It's a concern to me, but see where we go with that. Road Commission, their group, the CRA, County Road Association, did a study. And it appears that they're losing between $23 and $24 million of road tax money from electric cars. Sounds like a lot, but you divide it over all the road commissions, it probably doesn't, but it is a loss. Eagle is clamping down on mineral well brine. It sounds like they're not going to allow us to use mineral well, well, brine, which we don't. We've got the Dow Lake thing that we're using now, which is, which quite a bit better, but some places like Manistee, they have their own brine wells, and so they may be stopped. Looks like we're going to have restrictions on mowing because of milkweed. And they're changing the time span because of the bats, and there's two or three of them that for some reason want to nest right by the road. Ask me why. They're going to limit how long they can cut brush stuff because of this bat. Always exciting. And I did set in on John Ross thing over and on her. The one thing that really stuck out to me was it was brought up. Can't remember names. About the court system changed where you can get your record wiped clean. And because of what the state is telling the courts to do, a lot of criminals are basically not in. And I would love the prosecutor, no way we're ever going to get the judge to come explain it, but I would like to know. You know, because it's about public safety. I'm very concerned that we're, oh, we're just, everything's fine. Go ahead and go. Well, certain cases, yes. But certain cases, I'm not too sure of. And I'd just like to see what the state has stipulated and what's required. I mean, you ask a police officer to do a job, two minutes later, the guy's out, back out on the street. So I just think it's a very good thing to discuss. So anyway, that's all I got.
Questions, Gary? Rhonda, County Administrator?
Sorry, I was writing a note. Sorry, Dr. Sarah. Just a few things going on in our office. One thing of note is that Rebecca Hubers and I are working on various angles to try to find funding for an emergency communications tower specifically located in the city of Frankfurt. What I put on your desk this morning is a letter that we will be distributing to the neighbors that we have here in Benzie County, the townships, villages and cities. We're also going to be giving that to senators and representatives just to kind of say, hey, you know, we've identified a need and we're to a point where we need to find funding. I do have a meeting with Senator Sabanow's staff person, chief of staff, on Friday to talk about funding. And I've also been in contact with Peters, Senator Peters, to hopefully work to get a direct appropriation for funding for that project. And so we're, we're really putting the word out there as far as funding for that project. The next thing, MERS, we did get our annual statement. We haven't gotten the actuarial yet, but we did get our annual statement from MERS. And as a result of last year, we are at about $2 million in lost investment income. So just so you're aware. I will be meeting with Crystal Lake Township on Friday, and I anticipate meetings with other townships to help them go digital like we have. The word is out in the community that we are streaming on YouTube and other social media, and folks are, they're really liking that. And so I'm meeting with Amy Ferris on Friday to help set them up to go digital and stream their meetings as well. And I anticipate other townships wanting that help as well. So we are, we're doing good things and people are following. So that's cool. Just a reminder that we are still seeking letters of support for the Broadband Robin Grant Application. I've received about a dozen letters of support so far, and I know that Tim Malone has received some directly as well. Josh at Girl Benzie is helping to get the word out there to work on those letters of support. So just a reminder, letters of support are needed for that grant application, which closes March 14. I have a meeting set up with a young gentleman. Liam is his name, and he has a nonprofit called Government For Tomorrow. And he is, he is the, he was the youngest person to ever serve on a public board. He was 14 years old when he was appointed to Charlevoix's DDA Board. He's now 17 years old, and he has this nonprofit, and the whole mission of this nonprofit is to get our youth involved in local government. And so I'm going to be meeting with him to talk about some ideas to maybe get our youth here in Benzie County to get more involved in local government. I don't hear of many kids going to college to work for the county. I can tell you that. And so ways to try to get kids involved, whether it's attending meetings or potentially serving on a committee or even doing an adopt a commissioner program where they meet with UFIN folks to talk about things that they find important to their demographic. So I'm meeting with Liam here soon to talk about that, to figure out how we can get kids in Benzie County more involved in local government. Liam is a young man who, he's from northern, further northern Michigan, Charlevoix area. And he's created this nonprofit called Government For Tomorrow. And he was a young kid who wants to be involved in local government. And he was appointed to serve on the DDA when he was 14 years old in Charlevoix County. And so he, his whole mission is to try to get more kids involved in local government.
I would automatically think if somebody was under 18, they wouldn't be eligible.
They can't vote, but they're involved in the conversation. Yes, under 18, they can't vote, but they're involved. So for instance, downtown Traverse City has just appointed a few student liaisons to some of their boards as well to be part of the conversation and discussion that's happening at our local level, just to get them, their interest peaked and get them more involved in, you know, what we're doing that's going to impact them into the future.
I would encourage you in those discussions to go to this, have him go to the school systems and reintroduce a civics class. I don't think school systems had a civics class for a long time.
Schools are required to teach certain government-related classes in order for students to graduate. That's a Michigan requirement. Now, what they're calling it specifically, I don't know. When I was in school, I took civics class in ninth grade and government class in 12th grade. I don't know the exact requirements anymore, but that's part of his mission is to work with these schools, work with the local governments, and get these kids involved in learning about the actual process.
You know what? Anybody in that age group that wants to be part of the solution, let's, let's help them as much as we can.
And that's where I'm at with it. I want to see kids in this building. I, one of the teachers from the Freshworms Academy, we're working together on putting together some sort of field trip where she has students come to the building and learn a little bit about county government. And so trying to get those kids involved and what we're doing and what we're talking about is extremely important. It also helps tie them to this community that much more where they want to be part of the solution and work towards the future of Benzie. So.
Not to belabor this discussion, but you could arrange where they could have one-on-ones in their age group with state-elected officials so that they don't get drowned out by what would be a normal coffee hour.
Right.
I think they may be encouraged to participate in the conversation.
I agree. I agree. So more to come on that. I don't know where we're going to go with it yet, whether it's an adopt a commissioner program or what have you.
If somebody could adopt me, that'd be great.
Well, they adopt you, they adopt you in the sense of they, so say there's a group of students who, they're really focused on housing and the housing crisis that we're in. And so how they kind of model it in other communities is those students would work with the commissioner to talk about that topic, brainstorm ideas of how maybe things could be implemented to improve the housing crisis. Those students then would have to come to this board meeting and present their ideas. And a lot of times the schools will give them extra credit for their government class to do this project. But they come to you with their, you know, their thought process, which is different than all of ours, and talk about the ways that they think Benzie County could help with the housing crisis. And so they kind of adopt a commissioner to really be that, be that point person to talk about these things from a government standpoint versus, you know, students. So they'd, they'd adopt you in the sense for your, your brain power, but not to buy you coffee.
I think that's excellent that the kids would, because, you know, we walked in here, at least myself, had no idea how this place worked. It would be nice to get out of high school and have some concept of what your local entities are doing.
Yeah, it's very important. I mean, I come from a family of public service, so I grew up going to township meetings and county meetings because my parents were going, but that doesn't happen as much anymore. And so, you know, government, local officials are essentially a dying breed. And so it's important that we're working with these kids to get them excited about going into local government and focusing on the things that matter locally.
I think you got to push the schools to do, make that a priority.
I think we have a topic that could be discussed further at our meeting this afternoon and added to our strategic plan.
Yeah. So I'm working on that. ARPA, I have a report due April 30th, just letting you all know. I have to report annually to the Department of Treasury regarding what we've done and what, opening up soon the portal on April 1st, and then I have to report by April 30th. To date, we've only actually cut a check for $120,000 to the Frankfurt Area Community Land Trust. And then we've spent some money on equipment for digitization. Other than that, we haven't actually spent any money yet. And so my reporting should be pretty easy, I'm hoping, in April. But just so you're aware, that's on my radar to report in April 30th. I'm also working with Networks Northwest on our master plan. We agreed a few months ago that we would just do an update to our master plan. And so I'm working with Networks Northwest, Stephanie, on that. And so more to come on that because I'll be reaching out to various, you know, entities and departments to get some ideas and talk about some things further. So that's happening as well. And just other things humming along in the office. So every day is a, every day is a new, new idea. It's great times. Does anyone have any questions for me?
There's no committee at the hall? No committee appointments? Unfinished business? New business? Bring this to our final public count. Anybody like sharing public input? White ground. I'd look for a motion.